We're going to skip ahead a little bit on our agenda as we honor a very special young lady. And Mrs. Vans, would you like to?
Absolutely. So we have Kaylee DeSautier here this evening. She is our first female Eagle Scout in this area. And so I've invited Kaylee to come up and to share just a little bit about herself and her achievements in scouting. And just wanted to take the time to honor her. And Kaylee, if you'll introduce your parents as well.
I'll leave them to take their role in that. My mom's back there, Amanda. She's in the Class A uniform, and my dad's behind her.
Thank you for coming.
I'm thankful to be here tonight. I'm a member of the local girls' troop in 220. And I'm also the first female to earn an Eagle rank in the North Star District, a second level council. I've been in the scouting program for two and a half years. And I have founded and led this, my group of amazing girls, which none of them really kind of show up tight. It was, you know, not something to do. And my Eagle project was a palinada house that I built at the Tiju Canoe River State Park, where I'm at.
Honored to have you here this evening and in our district as a female leader, so thank you for that. And what year are you in school?
I'm in eleventh.
Okay. Well, that's just congratulations. That's an amazing accomplishment. And we're proud of you, and it's even more exciting that you're the first female in the area to get that. So, well done. Kaylee, I know that Mr. Keel and I spoke several times, and he was so sorry that he couldn't be here this evening, but wanted to make sure that you knew that he was thinking about you this evening. We move on to consent items. And we have three board meetings that are on the consent agenda. One is the July 18th, 2022 regular board meeting. Does anyone have any questions or updates on that? And the second one is the minutes of the August 9th, 2022 regular meeting. Any questions or comments on that one? Anything from the community? And then the, let's see. Third one is approval of the minutes from the August 9th, 2022 study session. That was a short story, wasn't it? And then finally, the approval of the executive meeting on August 6th, 2022. Any questions or concerns? At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve these as presented. Thank you, Jenny.
Second.
Thank you, Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And motion passes six to zero. Moving on to IDP financial report. Todd, it's your lucky day.
In the education fund at the end of July in Portlou, Iowa, we had receipts of $1,044,722.16. The expenses in July are $1,241,513.3. Cash balance at the end of July is $618,401.77. July was a pretty good month so far. Debt service fund, we have receipts of $5,891.39. Expenses are $170,856.13. Cash balance in the debt service fund at the end of July is $1,222,205.5. In the operations fund, we have receipts of $56,277.53. Expenses of $403,858.45. Cash balance at the end of July in the operations fund is $1,389,692.49.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? At this time, I entertain a motion that we accept the funds reports as presented. Thank you, Casey. Thank you, Kyle. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. You don't have to vote, Todd. You're welcome to if you want to. I saw your hand go up.
I was just doing some favors.
All right. And claims.
Claims for this document are the amount of $1,696,279.69.
Questions or comments from the board? Anyone like to move that we approve the claims? Thank you, Jenny.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. And that's the amount. Payrolls totaling $768,492. Any questions or concerns from the board? And again, I'll drag a motion on that. All in favor, oh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jenny, thank you. All those in favor. Motion carries six to zero. And presentation and board consent to advertise 2023 budget.
Certainly, everyone got a binder of, briefly, in front of this calendar. Standard calendar, what we used since before I arrived. There is a bit of flexibility in the way it's set up, just so everyone's aware that there are deadlines. So much time because we're probably curious that everything has to be done, so it will be gateway by November 1st.
Todd, can I ask you to move up a little closer? The fan is kind of, making it harder to hear.
I can get my outside voice going.
Your coaching voice?
It survives since Saturday. The next page, the next tab is the presentation that kind of, I usually work off of, and I'll be working off of tonight. It's got the yellow PowerPoint. And so that first, second page, flip that to the title page. That's just a review. I think that we're almost, I think at this point in time, we're almost done with how the funds have changed. I mean, I think we've done that for long enough, and I think we're used to that now. I thought I could leave it here one more year. Another review of budget calendar. Then we get into a little bit of a review of funds. 2017, 2021. Next page gives an idea of what our assessed value has done in the last five years. And where our levies were last year as compared to 2021. Levis were $145,000 more last year. Running Day Fund is the next couple of pages, and we are expecting to do that at the moment. Then we get to the education fund. This is the most up-to-date student count we have today, so this has obviously changed since now is Cal Day. Expecting a little bit more than $12,250,000 revenue from fiscal wealth account here, excuse me, next year. So that's our budget projections, also that revenue projection. Debt service fund. This one's a little bit different. It's a little expected to have a pair of debt, obviously. That amount might be a little bit fluid because I kind of inserted numbers on the high side for the debt we're presently talking about. The next year, what we're talking about this year. So, but that puts us in line somewhere with what we'll be paid this year. The operation fund. Our AV, the count in the school districts, however, that is up 13%. So I'm expecting our tax rate to increase substantially because of that. So of course, the expenditures are based off of that as well. Next page, lending plus replacements plan. I have to talk to Kevin. We still have a plus we haven't received yet this year or last year. I'm not sure what the timeframe is, but here we're going to be trying against supply chain issues. It's a common excuse, but it makes sense because it seems to be affecting everything that we are involved with. So that's kind of it. That's all I did. I didn't breeze through it. It's kind of hard for me to grasp this because I definitely did that now because I'm automatic. The next steps for us to give a commission to advertise on gateway at 20, but if we have to advertise now, we don't have. Not satisfied statutory requirements. It has to be done. I had to have posted gateway these 10 days before public care, which I was hoping to be more than that. So if you would like to do that tonight, of course, I would be happy to. If you'd like to, we can discuss it in the study sessions. That still is a time to have a discussion as well.
Just a couple to go, just a little bit deeper in this. As Todd said, we don't have to approve this tonight. If we do approve it, we can still go through, have discussions, make amendments, make changes if necessary. The other important part of this to point out again would be with the AV. And I want to thank Casey for helping us. We were having a difficult time getting the AV tools in to complete the budget. And reached out, and she helped us navigate a little bit better to make sure that we had accuracy there and the information there. The hope is with the operation fund, the increase in the AV and what we're able to gain there, we wouldn't have to make as many transfers from education fund over into operation, which will help then stabilize our education fund. Anything else, Todd? Any questions for Todd from the board? We've also, I'm sorry, Katie. We also invited Baker Tillian for our study session to talk a little bit deeper about bonds and where we are financially, where we are. And do a finance 101 to refresh everybody's memory, to have those discussions, have those conversations. But again, we were waiting on that AV to help guide us down the bond route as well. So with that information, I think Baker Tillian, we're working with him to try to get into that study session to go down deeper and to live all of the scenes for Rochester schools. So we won't put you in a bind if we don't vote until the next board meeting?
You can, yeah, if you don't vote, you have a commission. Well, we understand that that is set dates, so that would, the 19th, study session's on the 6th. Next meeting's on the 19th, so that should be.
My turn. I think I'd like to put Baker Tillian's to say myself, or you guys think?
Yeah, I had actually called Jenna and kind of talked to Maria and Todd a little bit. And I had meant to do this. I don't know, a week and a half ago, I think I was going to send out an email to the board with a Google Docs on it. And I kind of got to thinking, I had some questions about, like the bonds, where they were at, what projects were on each one. It's just a refresher because budget was coming up. And I know Colin Westberger and I were talking, and I said, you know, we really ought to just get a Google Docs where when those thoughts come in my head or in anyone else's, we can just add it to that doc so that everyone kind of sees that question as far as, you know, with the Zebra Tech. I know that was part of the bond, you know, where do those numbers come in at? Is there anything left in there? Is this the one that's coming up for exploration? You know, I mean, just to try to, you know, I guess, be in the know for all of us. And so I get throwing that out there, and if you guys don't mind, I'll try to actually get to that this week. And then, so if you see it in your email, that's it. I mean, it's just, hey, this is information I'd like to see, you know?
It's a good idea.
I think we do have to break out shows, bonds. We've got to step forward and make pay off this.
And I have that. I just have to dig it out.
And I think Todd brought up a good point, and that's something Baker Tillian can bring back to us. And figure that right out helps kind of track them all around. Thank you, Todd.
You're welcome.
Action item F is approval of the consultant's contract for special services department. So I'll turn this over to Mrs. Shink to talk about the deaf and hard of hearing contract.
So last year, we had a deaf and hard of hearing licensed teacher on staff. And this year, we do not. And we have, I think, seven students that are deaf and hard of hearing that need services. So this lady that we contracted with is also doing another school in the district. So she is coming one day a week, up to five hours a day to work with our students.
Is that enough time?
Yes, yes. A lot of the time is consult with teachers. So we have one student that's more involved that she will work with, but most of the other ones are consultation. Just to make sure their hearing aids and their amplification systems are working correctly and troubleshooting any of that. Any other questions?
I'm familiar with those services. That's a, it's a godsend, you know, that we can contract for that. It's a good thing.
And they're very hard to come by because it's a hybrid. So there's, so there's not very many people that are licensed in that, just like the vision. So unfortunate that we passed somebody.
Yep, I agree. I looked it up earlier today. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consultant contract for special services department. Thank you, Todd. And Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six to zero. Approval of the tag policy. So the tag policy is the Teacher Appreciation Grant, and it's a process that we have to go through each year. I believe that Mrs. Shawley is zooming in, and she and I have had discussions. We would entertain that we continue to keep the status quo, which means those funds that come into us from the state are distributed evenly amongst the teachers who need the qualification. So they would have to be highly effective, effective. They would have had to have taught last year in our district and remain in our district this year. There has to be a differential between the highly effective and effective, but this is one of those steps in the process to ensure that when those funds arrive, which is typically around the end of October, beginning of November, then that we can turn around and distribute those to the teachers. And it's a necessary step in the process, so we're not going to do it. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? I would accept the motion to approve the tag policy. Thank you, Kyle. Second. And Casey. All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero. Next, approval of the third reading of policies. Oh, I always love this call. Okay, policy. 221, 2600, 5111, 5340.01, 5460, 2370.02. Policy 8330, policy 6110, policy 5511, policy 6114. And policy 016.3 and 6325. Again, these were all technical corrections or just language that was directed to us to just go ahead and approve those. So this being the third reading, I would entertain a motion to approve those policies. Thank you, Jenny.
Second.
Thank you, Kyle. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six to zero. Approval of out-of-state field trip for the Spanish students. This is a trip I believe that has been taken before. It is a Saturday field trip. But the reason that this calls for board approval is we would actually be taking students across the state line to Chicago for this field trip. So I believe that she is proposing taking 25 students on a Saturday field trip to the museum to learn more about culture and heritage. Is that for all grade levels or is it like third year?
Spanish 1 through 4, Spanish club, all were invited. The majors are going Saturdays to help transportation, because we could get back in time for transportation or run the routes.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? I will accept a motion this time to approve the out-of-state field trip for Spanish classes. Casey and Jenny. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six to zero. Students, stakeholder focus, donations. You haven't had any changes since like 2:00. Good job. Okay. Always grateful for the community and the area. Some of these, this is from far and wide sometimes, and near as well. But RHS 2022 FFA program received $250 from the Andersons Incorporated. Riddle Elementary received $250 from One School, One Book from the Northern Indiana Community Foundation. RHS 2022, 2023 Cheerleaders, $500 for new signs and uniforms from the Rochester Telephone Company. Riddle Elementary, $2,400, Anthem Support Kids Fit 5K from Cabello Associates Incorporated. That's us. RCSC, $169.59 for student needs from Pro-Good Card participants. Columbia Elementary, high chair and stroller for daycare room from the Vois family. Columbia Elementary, a rocking chair from the Dalton family. Columbia Elementary, backpack lights from First Source Bank. And Riddle Elementary backpack lights for First Source Bank. I love that they're doing that. That's a great thing. I've seen lots of stuff about it over the years online, and I'm glad it's here. And especially for the dark mornings that will be coming before we know it. So grateful for all of those donations. Any questions from the board? Questions or comments from the community? And I will accept the motion. So, Casey?
Second.
And Todd. All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Personnel report. And that hasn't changed since 3:00 either, has it? That's amazing. Okay. I'm always reluctant to print it out. The following personnel report is up for us to vote on today. And recommendations from Columbia Elementary. Linda Sanders as an instructional assistant at an hourly rate of $12. Mia Overmeyer, Mia, I'm sorry. Daycare assistant, $12.51 an hour. Tammy Jurgen, special needs instructional assistant, hourly rate $12.59. Mary Ryder, instructional assistant, hourly rate $12. Riddle, Angie Overmeyer, special needs instructional assistant at rate of $15.43. Recommendations from the middle school. Eric Davis, removal as RMS CIA position due to transfer to RHS. CIA positions at RMS to be awarded a stipend change to $2,250. Request for RMS Friday School position paying annual stipend of $1,000. Tanya Parker, food service assistant, hourly rate of $13.58. Rochester High School. Megan Allen, RHS Music Choir, stipend $1,825. Lucy Hernandez, RHS Spanish Club, stipend $365. Jennifer Snyder, RHS FCC LA, stipend $352.50. Sarah Masterson, RHS FCC LA, stipend $352.50. Val Hoover, junior class, stipend $161. Boon Shawley, junior class, $161. Lauren Friend, senior class, $182.50. Val Hoover, senior class, stipend $182.50. Lisa McMillan, auditorium manager, stipend $1,035. Recommendations from RHS Athletics. Noah Flango, volunteer coach, wrestling program for 2022, 2023. Marshall Fishback, volunteer coach, wrestling program for 2022, 2023. Wade Schaefer, volunteer coach, wrestling program for 2023. Jacob Schroder, volunteer wrestling coach, program for 2023. Questions or comments about the personnel report? Anyone in the community have any questions or comments? And I will entertain a motion to approve that. Thanks, Jenny. And Casey. All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. And we have superintendent's business. So go through each of the buildings and ask our principals to report out on successes since the start of the school year. What's happening behind the scenes that you're working on and what we can do to support you in those behind-the-scenes endeavors and on a day-to-day basis. So Oscar, we'll start with you and work our way through the buildings from high school to Columbia.
All right. So the other night, we had Junior/Senior Parent Night. They had a pretty good turnout for that. They got to learn about some of the scholarship opportunities in a fast fit and all the exciting things that the junior/senior parents need. Our new business program's off the ground and running. We got a lot of kids in that throughout the day. And they're starting to do some good things in there and starting to promote some of the things to the school along with their curriculum. Mr. Lyles program, it's in this building now over there, that new setup is working out really well. Still working with some business partners there to kind of grow that as well. We have an internship program that's becoming, I don't know if I want to say renowned or well-known around the state because we have almost 50% of our seniors are in an internship in our community, which is a huge support from our community. It's a big prop to Mrs. Snyder for that. We have people calling us at least weekly, asking us how we already have that in place because that's a big push with the pathways from the state. So I appreciate her work there. I want to thank you guys for allowing me to put my handbook, no backpacks. That has went really smooth. The students have really cooperated with that. Now, when I go into our double classrooms, it feels like they're like twice the size. You can actually walk around the room and so forth. So I know our teachers really appreciate that, and the students have done a great job with that. Something I really want to brag on is Mrs. Duranolo and our band. She's really starting to expand that program. She had a color guard this year. If you know what color guard is, it's the young ladies that are throwing the flags. Could be young men too. But her and Mrs. Allen, our new choir director, are looking to start a band boosters community. If you hear that, they're looking to start a band boosters. So please look to join that. I know I was at a wedding on Saturday and talked to a few of the graduates and some of the parents in the community, and they're really excited about that. So something to look forward, that we'll need community support on when it comes to that. And then something that's really neat is just inside the building and our. And then, um, something that's really neat is just inside the building, our culinary arts program that was new last year, um, has kind of taken off and she's really implemented our, uh, special ed students in that. And they've taken over ordering all of our concessions in the building, which has took a huge lift off of, uh, some of what Mr. Reenie and Mr. Marx have going on. Mr. Marx still helps oversee it, but they're doing a phenomenal job and learning some math skills and some things like that with those programs. What we have coming up, on September first, we have ASVAB, which is the military exam. Um, everybody takes it because if you get a certain score on it, then that helps us get you across the stage. Uh, on September second, that's a big night for us. Um, we have the eighty-seven state champ reunion. Coach Miller's coming back, we've confirmed that. Um, so we're hoping that that message is out there. Um, that's going to be a big deal. That's the same night that we're also recognizing Marshall Fishback. His ring has come in, he and Coach Guard, uh, we'll get them down on the track and recognize them as well. And that's homecoming, which means FFA, um, pork chop dinner, which is a big hit. So, we're excited about that. Then, uh, something that just came through today on September twenty-third, which is another home football game. Um, the class of two thousand and two from Caston reached out. And they, uh, reached out due to the fact that, um, that was the class, I believe, that our student who had the medical emergency there on that Friday morning, his dad graduated with. They're going to do a hog roast for a free will donation on September twenty-third. That's also youth football night. It's what Coach Schaefer also uses for teacher appreciation night, which is kind of funny because that's when all the teachers try and squeeze into the football jerseys that the kids give them. But, um, so that'll be a big night for us, supporting that Strasser family. Before I sit down, I want to thank the community, thank our teachers, um, thank the school board for that support. I was able to go and deposit a pretty significant, um, set of checks and cash into the Strasser family's bank account, uh, last Friday. So, I appreciate that support from the community. Um, they're going to continue to need that. There's good, there's good reports coming out of Indianapolis still from Andy and Lenaya, and they just appreciate your thoughts and prayers. So, hopefully, it sounds like Drew might be able to come home here at the end of the PBA next week. That's where we are. Thank you. Oh, any questions? Sorry. All right.
Well, the middle school, we start off the year with a thing. We had, um, Kona Ice come in for our PBIS day for the first day back. Um, so that was well-received, not only by kiddos, but by staff because that day was, um, hot. So, it was nice having the flavored ice truck there. Kids had fun at the park and other things that we did. Um, we had our first, um, dance under our belt. And I think there was ninety-five percent attendance to that. So, that was really nice seeing the kids, um, kind of get back in the swing of things and enjoy themselves and do some karaoke, um, a little bit of sing-along karaoke in the gym with some teachers and, you know, just having that, um, building those relationships with those kiddos in different aspects other than the classroom. Something we're working on, um, with the high school is the woods class over there at the high school is going to build us another Gaga pit. Um, it's something that is, um, coming in last year. It's needed because of the amount of kids that want to play. But whenever I restricted it to fifteen because of the amount of numbers so that we don't get injured, this other pit will help balance. It's nice to rely on a program like the high school has to help, you know, build that for our school corporation. So, that's kind of excited. Uh, we did put up another, um, oh, it's called Nine Square. And, um, it is another playground equipment that's up and running and, uh, the kids love it. And that helped us with numbers of, you know, getting more kids acclimated and actively or getting into an activity instead of just sitting off to the side and waiting on another game to play. So, that was nice to see. We got through NWA testing. Um, just tonight, there's our first volleyball games going on. Uh, the athletic boosters that supplied, um, half of the ten thousand dollar volleyball equipment, that's up and running and it looks nice. And it's nice to hear from previous, um, reps that have came in saying how nice things look. So, um, again, it's a community that gives back and that's greatly appreciated. Um, things coming up, um, probably another dance. I know they have like a costume dance last year around Halloween time. Um, hitting some of that curriculum stuff that we're doing, starting to, um, do a deeper dive into math and English especially and utilizing, uh, the teachers that we have in those areas to do pull-out, push-in and, um, just try to get a boost on through those I-bird numbers that we got.
At Riddle, the first few weeks of school have gone very, very well. So, our kids all learn the routines and things like that, so that's nice. Um, getting all of our, kind of our benchmarking done, that's what we do at the, the elementary. Testing our kids within NWA, as Lucas mentioned, also within our reading curriculum, math curriculum, just to see where they're at so we can get them in their title services and things that they need to be in. So, all of that's just about ready to lift off here in the next week or so. We'll have all our title groups and all that mapped out and figured out, so that'll be good. Uh, upcoming, we've got picture day on Thursday. And, uh, just appreciate the board's support.
Very similar to Luke's. At Columbia, we've had a really good, uh, start to the year. Um, open house went really well. We had a huge turnout for that. Uh, our daycare is up and, and rolling. Um, and the ladies that are in there are doing a fantastic job. Parents are adjusting to bringing the kids in and, and, uh, it's really, really been a neat thing to see. Although I panic quite often when I hear those poor, those kids because it's just not noises that I'm used to hearing down in my office, you know? So, I mean, I don't panic, I mean, don't get me wrong. They just, they just like to cry and scream out a little bit down there, so. But anyways, uh, so we're doing the same thing. Uh, really, the, the primary focus, um, for the first month of school for us is relationships. Um, we try to develop the relationships with the kids and the parents. Um, it's a focus that I have my staff, uh, really working on. Communicating with parents early on, establishing those relationships with them, uh, I think always helps on down the road if there become any hiccups throughout the year. So, that's really been our primary focus to get the year off. We don't have a lot of events scheduled right now. Uh, like, uh, Luke said, you know, trying to get the routines down and the protocols. And, uh, they're doing fantastic. Uh, being able to have the preschool working, uh, or eating in the cafeteria last year has made, um, our lunch operations go very smooth because the kids have now eaten there for a year in pre-K. You would think it, but I mean, two or three years ago, our kindergarten, we're still eating in classrooms. So, you know, now that we've got everybody eating in the cafeteria and it going real smooth, lunch is a whole different ballgame in the building right now, so that's been good. So, relationships is our focus. Uh, things we've got coming up, we've got several field trips coming up. Uh, kindergarten's got a field trip, going to, um, Law Bash Honeywell Center for a, a show coming up here a little bit. And then, um, we're finally going to get back to McClure's Orchard with our first grade kiddos. And, uh, so those are a couple that we've got, got going. So, we appreciate, uh, the support and, uh, we've had a real good start. Car lines are looking A-OK. Thanks, Peter, right? Still looking good?
It's well.
So, there you go.
I'd like to, um, actually kind of say, I'm not sure who is taking like all the Facebook pictures and videos for all the schools, but, um, I don't know if you understand the impact of that, but I have heard so many good comments on that and so many people saying that they just love it. They love to see, um, and I know it's part of the marketing plan, and kudos, you know, to everybody for putting that forth. I know you're so busy and that's just one more thing to think of is posting whatever you have on your phone to pay Facebook. But it really is making a difference. I've heard a lot of people say they just love seeing the pictures and love seeing, you know, the activities and the kids and, and all of that. And the letters from parents as well, or from the teachers as well, the beginning of the school year. Um, I've heard a lot of, of very good comments about that. And as a parent, I can say, I liked it. You know, I really enjoyed that too, um, because there were teachers I didn't know. And, um, so it was just really nice to be able to hear from them and see what was going on. So, thank you very much for putting that effort in.
Thank you to everybody. It's a problem to team and we work hard. And tomorrow morning, we start our day with, uh, the principals, uh, the directors of each, um, department and have a large group to continue that communication and be a successful community where those things are. So, I do appreciate your support and your efforts as well. Anything else, Jen?
I appreciate all of you being here this evening. And, uh, if we, uh, don't have any more, um, items for discussion, then, uh, anybody? Comments, questions, complaints? The complaint department is about three miles down.
I was just going to say. It was open yesterday.
It was open yesterday, I guess. All right, uh, then we are adjourned. Thank you all so much for taking the time to see me.
You made it, you did it.